Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 28th, 2025 Michigan City Area Schools Board of Trustees Meeting. This will be a two-pronged meeting. First, we will have a budget hearing, all right? And then after the budget hearing, we will have our regular monthly meeting. So it's going to be two-pronged, all right? So can we start off with the pledge allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will say it's nice to have all of you here today, though. You guys looking good out there. Next, our mission statement, please.
The mission of the Michigan City Area Schools: We are a diverse community of families, students, and staff who take pride in our schools, contribute positively to society, and prepare students for lifelong success.
Thank you. Ms. D, all members are present except for Mr. Gresham. Is he on Zoom? No? So we have six present, one absent. Again, this is will be our budget hearing. Right now, we will have... Give me one second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board.
Can we... I want to do public forum first. I'm sorry. I'm waiting for my... I'm looking for my little spiel I usually say. But anyway, public forum is open. You will have three minutes to address your statement. Please know you will have no direct or indirect contact with the board. Also, no obscene gestures, reference administration or staff. So if anybody would like to talk about... Well, just public forum, reference the budget hearing. Public forum is open. Public forum is open. Public forum is now closed. Thank you. Cheers.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Tonight, I do have six resolutions to present to you. We'll start with the Capitol Projects Plan Resolution. It's a three-year plan. It's for technology, equipment, and safety for all our buildings. With that, I would respectfully request approval of the Capitol Projects Resolution.
Any questions from any board members? Seeing no question, what is the pleasure of the board? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, how's the board like to vote? All in favor? Any opposed? Ms. D, that passes with six members voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you. The next resolution is the Bus Replacement Plan Resolution. That's a five-year plan on replacing buses. With that, I'd respectfully request approval of the Bus Replacement Plan.
Thank you. Any questions? I have a quick question. Mr. Kaminski, can we do all of them together or have to do them separately?
You can do all of them as long as he reads all of the resolutions by title.
If you want to read all of them together, then we'll vote on them together. Then if any board members have any independent questions, we'll answer them.
That'd be good.
Thank you.
The third resolution is the Transfer Resolution. The fourth is the Present Year Reduction Resolution. The fifth is the 15% Transfer Resolution. And the final one is the Form Four. And this approves the entire 2026 budget.
Thank you. Any board members have any questions on any of the resolutions that were just read? Seeing no questions, what is the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval of all five.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. D, that passes with all six members voting yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The budget hearing is now closed, and we will go into our regular board meeting. At this time, public forum will be open, reference our regular board meeting. Public forum is now open, reference our regular board meeting. Please stay in tune with the order that I read at the budget hearing. So, public forum is now open. Public forum is now open. Public forum is closed. Thank you. Next is our consent agenda. Number one, approval of the minutes preceding meeting in 2026 meeting, budget hearing on September 30, 2025, and the public hearing on October 15, 2025. Number two, approval of employee appointments, resignations, retirements, leaves of absence, and status change. Number three, approval of secretaries' report on bills to be paid. Number four, approval of pay dates for September 19, 2025, and October 3, 2025. Number five, tribal reimbursement. Number six, facility fee waiver. And number seven, totally agree with... Should that be a consent agreement agenda or is that in business? Totally agree with Mr. Kaminski. What is the hearing, the consent agenda? What is the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Thank you, board. Ms. D, that passes with all six members voting yes. Next, Superintendent Dr. Wendell McCullough.
Thank you, Mr. Corley. Before I turn it over to our Marsh staff, I'd like to highlight that we are clearly going next level. As you can look in this room and see that we have more people than we have space for. So I'm very excited to hear and see all the great things that are happening at Marsh this year. And we have our Principal of Marsh, Kerschel Hopson, who is here to share all the great things that are happening. So at this time, I'd like for her to come forward and speak about Marsh.
Can you hear me okay? All right. Good evening, President Corley, trustees of the board, superintendent, associate superintendent, as well as distinguished district office staff and directors. I am Kerschel Rowling, the proud principal of Marsh Elementary School. And we wanted to come today to share with you some of our highlights from the start of our school year. Of course, as you already know, Marsh Elementary School... Spacebar. Technology help. Okay, there we go. Okay. Okay. As you are already aware, Marsh Elementary School has been a cornerstone of the community for over 100 years. It's small. Is it... Can you make it large? Okay, thank you. Has been a cornerstone in the community for over 100 years. So I am just honored to be able to lead the charge of Marsh Elementary School and continue all of those traditions that have been going on for generation to generation. And we plan to do that for generations to come. Okay, thanks. We currently service 284 students, 18 teachers, six paras and IAs, one counselor, one instructional coach, one secretary, one nurse, and as you can see, a whole host of community members and parents that are super supportive to us here at Marsh Elementary School. If it's okay with the board, I would like to acknowledge our teachers that are present at this time. If you can just give a quick hand wave. Okay, parents, thank you so much for clapping for them as they are giving up their Tuesday evening to come here to support us. And I also wanted to take a moment to thank our parents that are here this evening as well in allowing their students to come and participate with us. So thank you also to our parents. Our vision at Marsh Elementary School is Marsh Elementary School, in partnership with our families and our community members, provides a safe and nurturing learning environment. Our professional and dedicated staff provides students with a quality education that develops responsible citizens and lifelong learners. Here at Marsh, we are one school, one roar, next level student achievement is what we focus on. Our mission is very similar. We focus on crew, which is just simply making sure that our mission is centered around crew, which focuses on those habits of character, community, sense of belonging, responsibility is our focus here at Marsh Elementary School. Also, I am... One thing that I do is I hold... Man, this is just not... Okay. I hold the climate and culture of Marsh Elementary School very near and dear to my heart. It has been a very long time since I've seen a staff that is as dedicated and caring as the teachers and staff at Marsh Elementary School. And as you can see, this is just a snapshot of some of the things that we have done this year. Each month, we do our monthly Terrific Tiger Award that is focused around our eight habits of character. This month of October, we're focusing on responsibility. So our award ceremony is this Thursday, and we will be honoring our Terrific Tiger of October. We have our PAWS cards, which focuses on PBIS, which is kind of like our school currency where we reward students for showing positive behavior, and they get to spend that currency in our Marsh store. Also, we've had our principals' party where we celebrated IXL scores early in the school year. We've had a whole host of spirit weeks, everything from College Go Week to Anti-Bullying Week, and we are currently doing an Anti-Drug Rare Ribbon Week Door Decorating Contest. We have our new Marsh Mesh PTO. I did see our PTO president, Ms. Lee, if you're here, if you can raise your hand. Please let's give her a round of applause. She and her crew, they have done an amazing job reviving our PTO, and they have put on several events since the start of the school year. We have our All-Pro Dads. We had our first meeting this morning. We do our Wolf Pack Mentoring Program. We have our internal Paw Print. We have our external communication. We do monthly family nights. We're getting ready to start a One School, One Book Initiative where we are reading Charlie and the Chocolate Factory across the whole school. And then, of course, we have our daily crew participation. This is our PBIS matrix, as I mentioned. What do I have going on here, y'all? Thanks. We have our PBIS matrix. This is basically focused on what I talked about, that PAWS currency. So PAWS is an acronym for Positive Attitude, Actions Matter, Work Together, and Show Those Habits of Character. And these are basically our school rules. For example, when kids are on the playground or in the cafeteria, we're asking them to make sure that they take turns, include others, make sure that you're waiting patiently in line, clean up after yourselves, all of those skills that are helping them to become great citizens as they get older. These are just some fun photos of things that we've already done this year. I was glad that we had a Pet Pride winner in October. Ms. Hamilton was our Pet Pride winner, who is a great educator in our building. And then there's just some pictures there of our Grandparents' Day, as well as some of the other fun activities that we've done this school year. In addition, we have some things coming up very, very soon here that we wanted to share with you. Our November Habit of Character is Integrity and Initiative. We're planning a service project with our PTO. As I mentioned, we're doing our door decorating contest. We're working on I-Learn checkpoints. We're making sure that we're getting in at I-Read Three Practice, and we have a Veterans Day program coming up on November 11. Our school has identified four school improvement goals that we are working on this school year. This was a collaboration of our BOT, our IOT team, as well as our whole staff working together to figure out, okay, where do we want to start? What goals do we have for this school year? So our first goal is by spring 2026, all students in grades three through six will increase their ELA, I-Learn proficiency by 7%. And we're going to do that by making sure that we're moving students through those microphases is what we're working on, in addition to utilizing AMIRA, which is a research-based program, as well as IXL. Here's a little bit more data, just sharing about that goal. You can see there to the left, the red and green chart is the 2024-2025 school year, and to the right are those goals that I mentioned. So you can see that third grade, they were at 21.3% proficiency, but in three years, will be at 42.3 proficiency. Fourth grade is rocking it out, as you can see. Their current proficiency level is 60% in ELA, but by 2028, 2027, they'll be at 81%. So just that continuous improvement, that incremental growth, so that we can get to where we need to be. Our second goal is very similar, but it's in mathematics. By spring 2026, all students in grade three through six will increase their math I-Learn proficiency by 6%. So again, just making sure that we're utilizing those research-based strategies. We're working with our consultant, Warren, making sure that we're doing our problem solving, our JARS program, as well as our IXL, to ensure that we're meeting those benchmarks along the way, and we can utilize that data to inform our instruction. And then just a little more data chart that you have there showing that, hey, we're getting there. You can see on our chart, third grade is right behind fourth grade. I learned, I love to turn something into a competition. Okay, so third grade, let's go, let's be fourth grade. And you can see fifth and sixth grade is not too far behind, but the goal is that last column there. By 2027, third grade is at 62.7%. That fourth grade gets to that 78%. Fifth grade, 52%, and sixth grade, 44%. Goal three centers around I-Read Three. So by summer 2026, we want to have 80% of our grade three students pass that I-Read Three exam. And again, those benchmarks, making sure that students are reaching that ARM data in AMIRA, as well as our I-Read Three Practice Test. Our teachers are utilizing 95% group, IXL. They're embarking on rigorous small groups. And then also their rigorous classroom instruction as well. So here's where we lie currently. And you can see that they have had great growth thus far. 23, 24, 42%, 24, 25, 68%. That was great growth. By the end of the summer, they were at 70%, and now our goal is 80%. Okay, and with putting those strategies in place, we will definitely get there. And one last goal. Goal number four is also I-Read Three, but it's focused on our second graders. Okay, just ensuring that we incrementally increase their scores as well. And as you can see, that continuous improvement is well underway because we have some amazing teachers and amazing support staff. So as I mentioned, we... All of our teachers are rocking it out, but we have a couple of teachers that have just been amazing and are leading that charge. So I do want to take a moment to acknowledge a couple of people, if that is okay. The first teacher that I would like to acknowledge is a quiet powerhouse. We want to proudly recognize Ms. Hyette Dekey for her exceptional English language arts growth in the 24-25 school year. Ms. Dekey, if you could come on up and just grab, yes, a tip kick. I have two more. The next one is not present with us this evening, but his wife is. So just like the award shows, Ms. Eddinger, if you can come up on Jeff's behalf and accept his certificate. And we got Mr. Eddinger a gift card. I didn't think he wanted flowers, but... I started to get him just so Meg could have him, but, you know. She's earned her own rights. So Jeff is being acknowledged for outstanding performance in mathematics. And our last acknowledgement, teacher-wise, is focused on I-Read Three. I have Don, this lady, the I-Read Three Queen. She knows how to read those scores backwards and forward. She knows what students need in order to pass that test. Although we are all a part of I-Read Three growth, she leads the charge. So at this time, if Ms. Carlson could come up, please. I know. You will see her with a crown in a few moments because I left it in the car, but I am giving it to you. Ms. Carlson not only is a powerhouse in the classroom, but she also leads our drama club. So at this time, I will have Ms. Carlson in the drama club come up for a brief performance.
It is my pleasure to introduce the Marsh Drama Club for this year. It is an enrichment club for third and fourth graders that performs for our school. We do three performances on one afternoon so that everyone in our school can come see the performance. Drama Club is a very popular after-school activity, and it offers a unique opportunity for the students to read with expression and to practice their acting skills, which is something that they very much enjoy. So we are going to be performing just one small scene from our play this year, which is Peter Pan. And there is an audience participation part, so we will need all of you to help us out.
Peter, Tink seems sick. She was running on my shoulders most of the way back. We all know she hates me.
Oh, no, she must have used too much fairy dust. Oh, no, she must have used too much fairy dust. It takes a lot of energy to make that, you know?
And now that we're in the wheel, is there enough energy? Fun children believe in a fairy to keep her going.
Are you sure? Is there anything we can do to help her? Come on, Tink, you can do it.
Yeah, get up, you silly fuck. Baby donkey. Get up, get up!
Get up, get up!
It's not enough. Now we need your help. Let her think to show that we all believe in fairies.
Yes, we did. She's okay.
Oh, Tink, I'm so glad you're okay.
Of course I'm okay, you silly donkey.
All right, that's a pretty tough act to follow, but I'm going to try my best. Good evening, everyone. My name is Megan Eddinger, and I am the Instructional Coach at Marsh. I just wanted to take a few minutes to celebrate a supplemental reading program for our youngest readers at Marsh in grades kindergarten through third. Last year, we implemented AMIRA Learning, an AI-powered reading tutor and assessment platform. This program supports early literacy development by listening to the students read aloud, which you can see in this picture, provides them with real-time feedback and delivers data-driven insights to our teachers. Marsh teachers and I utilize these reports to drive instruction by identifying each student's specific strengths and areas for growth in reading fluency and accuracy. The reports provide actionable data and help teachers group students for targeted instruction and monitor progress over time. Our students also love AMIRA. One student stated, "I like the challenge when I'm reading with her." I would like to present awards to the following students who have read the most stories in their grade level with AMIRA so far this year. Evidence has showed us that the frequent usage of AMIRA correlates with greater reading growth. Congratulations to the following Marsh students. And if you're here, if you could come up and receive your award. In kindergarten, our top award... Our top readers, and they actually had the most stories read so far, is Laney Crutchfield, Eric Howard, Eric, will you come stand up here, buddy? Kealan Lee, and Mickey Palmer Moore. In first grade, we have Jace Silvis, Sincere West, Vera Lee Howard, and Kason Keel. In second grade, we have Kennedy Anderson, Anaya Fox, Monroe Miller, and Brishawn Merriweather. And our top readers in third grade, Tucker Hopper Boyle, India Dawson, Julian Alcantar, and Harmony Mercado Esquada. Congratulations to our top readers.
Okay, just one last thing. I know I'm getting close on time. We have an amazing music teacher. And at Marsh Elementary School, we truly believe in celebrating diversity. So we had a whole host of activities for National Hispanic Heritage Month. So our second graders are going to come and sing a quick song for you.
Thank you for being here, for having us. Thank you for having us at the board meeting this evening. We hope you enjoyed our song, and now please enjoy a sweet chocolate treat.
Thank you so much. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from any board members? If no questions, I would like to say thank you, Mr. Rowling, for the great display of what is going on at Marsh. I had the privilege of being in the building this morning. As I look out and see all these male dad figures out there that did not make the meeting today, I would expect to see you at the next All-Pro Dad Meeting, hopefully November 18th at 7:45 in the morning. So if you are a dad, a father figure, or anything, please make the meeting. I'd like to give a big shout-out to Mr. Lee and Mr. Ed, who were at our first meeting, so thank you. We will we will take a short pause right now if any of parents or anybody wanted to depart the meeting right now until we go on our next meeting. So we'll take like a two-minute pause real quick to let anybody who would like to leave, leave. But if you'd like to stay, please stay. Alright, we'll resume the meeting now. Next, we'll go into the business section of the meeting. First item of business, the public outreach, enrollment support, and marketing assistance. Dr. McCollum.
Thank you, Mr. Corley. And if we needed anything to highlight the mission statement for the Michigan City Area Schools, that we are a diverse community of families, students, and staff. You saw it on display with Marsh this evening. So very thankful for Ms. Hopson and the Marsh team, the family and students, for presenting this evening. I have for you tonight, board members, as you are, where many public school districts across our state, in the country, are facing increased competition for student enrollment and the need to better communicate their value to families and communities. Our enrollment decline reinforces our need to enhance our outreach and marketing efforts to tell our story, highlighting our academic opportunities, career pathways, and the many successes of our students. I am recommending for your approval, the agreement with the Michigan City Area Schools and the Winston-Torrell Group to ensure that families understand the quality of education and experiences our schools provide. So once again, I am recommending the approval of the consultant contract with the Winston-Torrell Public Outreach Group.
Thank you, Dr. McCollum. Any questions from the board? Seeing no questions, what is the pleasure of the board?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. D that passes with all six, yes. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. McCollum. Next is a ratification of collective bargaining agreement with MCEA. Ms. Beilhouser.
Thank you, Mr. Corley. Good evening, board members. Tonight, I'm seeking your approval of the contract between the Michigan City Education Association and the Michigan City Area Schools. As highlighted at our public hearing on October 15th and advertised on the district's website in accordance with Indiana Code, the contract proposes a two-year agreement from 2025 through 2027, an increase of $1,500 to the base salary for the 25-26 school year, a salary increase based on academic needs, $1,500 for a bachelor's degree, $2,000 for a master's degree, $750 for returning teachers employed for 120 days or more in the previous school year, and a $300 attainment for teachers that achieve their early literacy endorsement for the 25-26 school year. A returning teacher stipend in the second year of the contract for teachers that worked 120 days during the 25-26 school year. Appreciation stipends of $500 each year, and an increase in the ECA base to $42,000. And then also an increase towards the family health insurance, removing the cap and providing 75% towards that cost. And then other miscellaneous language items in addition of ECAs. I would, once again, like to acknowledge Mandy Chastain, president of MCEA, who is unable to be with us tonight, and her team, including Jen Buchanan, vice president, who is here, helping us to reach this contract agreement and help us remain competitive with neighboring communities and to show appreciation for teachers who have remained with the district. I'm asking for your approval for the contract between MCEA and MCAS. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Before we go any further, I know Mrs. Chastain couldn't make it, but I didn't know if Ms. Buchanan wanted to say some words in her absence.
Well, my name says after you say yes.
Okay, alright. Okay. We'll wait. We'll wait. Okay. Okay, we'll wait. Alright. I'm a little bit early, my bad. Seeing no further questions by the board, what is your pleasure? Go ahead, Mr. D.
Move for ratification of the bargaining agreement with the MCEA.
I have a motion. I have a motion in a second. Oh, okay. Was that somebody talking? Seeing no further, is there any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. D that passes. Thank you. Ms. Buchanan, would you like to speak now?
It's all about timing.
It is. The big boss told me when I could talk. Mandy couldn't be here. She said, "Thank you," also. But on behalf of the MCEA negotiating team and members, I'd like to thank the board for ratifying the contract between MCAS and MCEA. Come here, grow here, and stay here. This was the mission of our bargaining team, as we looked for ways to help attract new and also retain veteran teachers to our district. We feel this contract will help with these two goals that we had in mind. MCEA appreciates the administration work in cooperative cooperatively with us to reach a fair agreement. We are proud of Team MCAS and how we work together to come up with an agreement that identified the need to offer affordable healthcare to our families, extend parental leave to our teachers, and offer salary and retirement savings increases to our teachers at a time when funding public schools is on the decline. It is our hope that this contract will help in our efforts to retain our current highly qualified and well-trained staff and also to attract new. Thank you again for your support.
Thank you. Next order of business is administrative, administration salary increase. Ms. Beilhouser, again.
Thank you. As outlined in the memo that was shared with you, I would like to recommend approval of administrator increase of $2,750 in the base salary to all employees listed in the building and district-level administrators category, which includes transportation, food service, building principals, and district leaders or coordinators. The increase would also include a retention stipend of $500 for the 25-26 school year for those that have been with us for 120 days from last year. And then $1,500 for the 26-27 school year, again, for those that are with us for 120 days through this school year. And again, I'm just seeking your approval for that increase.
Any questions by any board members?
I had a question. You said there was an increase on the amount per individual? Was it, did you say $2,500? Per person? Okay, and so then what's outlined in that memo is just the total amount? Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Seeing no further questions, what is the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That passes, Ms. D. All six members are voting yes. Thank you, Mr. Beilhouser. Next, you're up again. PL 221, school improvement plans. Ms. Beilhouser.
Thank you. Previously, schools were required to submit a three-year school improvement plan to the Indiana Department of Education. However, this year, House Enrolled Act repealed that, repealed the Indiana Code. So schools are no longer required to submit to the state. However, Title I schools are still expected to complete a school-wide plan and to have that in the building. You saw Mrs. Rowling shared Marsh's plan, so submitted to you tonight. Nothing to vote on, but just sharing with you the K-8 Title I school improvement, school-wide plans. And then the high school is working on a smaller modeled action plan so that they can use that as a roadmap in their improvement journey over the course of the year.
Thank you. Any board members have any questions on Ms. Beilhouser's presentation? Seeing no, we'll move on to the next order of business, number five. Update to food service refund policy. Ms. Rodriguez.
Good evening, everyone. I submitted a request to update our refund total amount. Currently, in Section 800 in the board docs online, the 8500 section for food service programs under all accounts, it states that students who graduate or withdraw and have $2 or more in their account are eligible to either transfer the funds to another account, so maybe if it's a parent who has multiple students, or they're able to receive a refund. We would like to increase every fund amount from $2 to $10. The justification is the cost of postage, office supplies, administrative time that goes into it. So every, right now, we're over 100 people if we do the $2 or more. So we have to mail them a letter, so that's the cost of doing that the first time, that's at least a dollar. Then they respond back. We give them so much time to let us know if they want it or not. And then we have to mail them a voucher, and then we have to mail them a check. So we're already at almost $5 with just communicating back and forth on top of the $2 base that we started at. So the request is just to update that board policy to $10.
Thank you. Any questions by the board? Seeing no questions, what is the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes, Ms. D, with all six members voting yes. Thank you, Mrs. Rodriguez.
Thank you.
Alright, that finishes up our business section of the board meeting. Next, board statements and/or issues requiring action prior to the next board meeting. Any board members have anything they'd like to say? Oh, okay.
I just love seeing everyone come out. It's nice that people are out here and supporting. The Marsh community always comes out in a crowd, so that's always lovely to see. And the performances, I really enjoyed that, and I forgot to say that while they were here. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other board members?
Mrs. Rodriguez, I'd just like to thank you for inviting me for lunchtime, and I even went to two schools.
They loved having you there. Thank you.
I can't understand why, because nobody told me about the hairnet that I have to wear.
You looked good today.
No, I didn't. I mean, it's already gone, and now there's a net over it. So I want to tell you thank you. It was fun. It was fun. Thank you. Man.
Any other board members have any comments they'd like to make? Alright, well, looks like you guys got me right now. You know what that means? No. First of all, again, Dr. McCollum, thank you for your continued leadership and your administration and staff. To our kids, our parents, and community members, and the rest of the MCAS staff, thank you all for continuing to do what you do best and to make sure that our kids and our community have the best services that they can have. As you can see on display today by Marsh, I would like to first recognize the Michigan City Classified Association for providing dinner, their president, Chevy Woodard, and members of the transportation and food services part of our staff. Thank you all for dinner, even though I didn't get any, but still, thank you. I was late. Yes, I was. Had another meeting prior to this, but but thank you all for providing dinner and just coming out and showing, again, what we do best and that's to make sure that we have what our community needs. So again, thank you for that gesture. Again, oh, yes. So again, as you saw, many times I've commented about our community and just about our schools, and sometimes we don't get to see what goes on inside. We only get to hear what the state wants you to hear and see what goes on inside of our schools. But I think it's important that we, as a community, take pride in what we have going on and don't let somebody from outside come in and tell our story. Dr. McCollum has changed up what we do here a little bit, and I'm actually enjoying it. I like it more better than hearing me talk sometimes. But allowing our school principals to come in and talk about their buildings. And again, because if you're not a parent or a schoolperson or somebody that goes to school there, you won't know that. And I think it's valuable that we get to really get an inside look as a community, whether we have kids going to that school or not. I mean, I even see our crossing guard out here from Marsh, she was a... Don't you do our crossing guard stuff, Ms. Harrell?
No, that was my friend. I know.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought I'd say... Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought I said... Okay, maybe I got it mixed up. I know you work with... Okay, maybe I got it mixed up. All right. But anyway, again, to see all the community members out here that come out, but also to hear what was going on in our buildings, I think is very important. So thank you, Dr. McCollum, for adding that piece, and so I really enjoy, not just Marsh, but all of them. But Marsh, man, they brought, they just raised the next level. And like, the next school comes, they're gonna have to bring a singing group and a little bit more. But again, it was great to see that, and I think it's important that we continue to take value in that and to also display that as we're out and about in the community and let people understand that we are more than just what the state tells you what we are. There's a lot more that we have going on in our schools. So again, I appreciate that. Again, and thank you all for being here. It's always good to see not only students and parents here, but also staff members and support people who come out every day, do their job, and make sure, again, that our kids are, again, getting valued services that they need. Because at the end of the day, I always say, I have the pleasure of working in two different industries, but this industry is the industry that actually builds those people that will one day run this community and run other services. So we are, again, we are, again, providing what the future will hold, and it's up to us to make sure that the future is bright for everybody. And we have that responsibility and that ability to make it bright by nurturing these children that we service every day. So again, thank you all. Thank you all for being at this meeting and hope to see you all next month. Thank you. If there's nothing else, Dr. McCollum, do you have anything else?
Yes, I do have a couple of things, Mr. Corley, and thank you. Again, to MCCA for coming out tonight and supporting our community. And that's what you do on a daily basis, and I think I've said it to many of you that I've talked to over the last several years about how you get the day started for our students and you finish the day for our students. You feed our students in the morning and in many cases after school. So it's great that our parents, who don't normally get to put names and faces to the people that their students talk to, have that opportunity today, at least for Marsh. So once again, very much appreciate it. Also, as we've highlighted, our employees have choices. And it's great that with partnerships with our employee unions that they choose to support and choose to work in Michigan City. And I can't highlight enough the word that's on that wall over there, diversity. It's sort of a taboo word around the country politically, as you know. But for us, we don't necessarily have to point it out or say it all the time, because we can look in the crowd like right now, or we can look at our students when we walk into the building and know that it's not just a word for us. It's truly what makes Michigan City a great place to be. And for those of us, whether or not you are born and raised in here, like many of us are, or you come to Michigan City to work, you can't help but appreciate the diversity that we have in our community, especially in our school community. So truly, I want to thank everyone for coming out again tonight. And then also acknowledge that as the seasons change, so do some of the activities for our students. So we know that, at least at the high school, that the fall season, and that's really elementary, middle school, and high school, that fall sports seasons have ended. But we still do have one team left that is participating, and that's our boys' football team that will be over in Boppa Reso on Friday night. So if you're not able to get out and support them, you can also watch them. And I'm sure that we can share the link on our Facebook page so that you can cheer them in spirit if you're not there physically. And we want to make sure that they represent us well. And they have a great opportunity this year to do some things that Michigan City has never done before. So very excited for that opportunity for them. And then also a couple of things before our next board meeting. One, we do have a Veterans Day program also at the high school. So anyone who's a veteran or a family member of a veteran, November 11th at 1:30 at the gym in high school. And then also, we have plays coming up. So if you're not doing anything on a Friday, I think it's the second week or that week after Veterans Day, so the 18th, at the high school, we have three days of Mean Girls Friday. So once again, these are great opportunities for us to show support for our students and our staff. Even if you're not a parent or a teacher at one of those buildings, it's something that I know that students appreciate. So all about our culture and environment, and them seeing you goes a long way in doing that. So thank you very much, Mr. Corley. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. McCollum. Anybody else from the staff have anything? No? Anybody? A big shout out to Ms. Gaston for her first official big meeting. So again, we are so happy to have her here. Well, we wrap it up. We're here for a whole hour, man. This is a pretty good meeting. Again, a pleasure seeing you all. Hope you have a good evening. Have a good night. Thank you.